The next section, uh, next segment of our work session is to talk about the term sheet slash RDA. As a reminder, the RDA is the redevelopment agreement. It is what actually dictates the financial terms and obligations between the developer and the city. The RDA is 15 pages. It starts as a term sheet. This is really where we are at in the process. The term sheet is really, it's the napkin that we slide across the table back and forth that says, here's what I want you to do, here's what I want, this is what I'm willing to pay, and that goes back and forth. And so the point of this work session is to share with the council the terms that we have on the term sheet right now, which is still going back and forth. It's still a redlined version, but the big pieces of it are, we've, we're starting to settle on. We don't want to put Joe Serrano from Kutek Rock, who's our bond counsel, to task on putting together a 15-page, 14, 15-page redevelopment agreement if we don't agree that these are the terms that we want to continue to move forward with. So that's the point of tonight's work session is to talk about what those terms are and make sure that we're barking up the right tree, I guess is, might be the best way to say that. So I think Mr. Dyer shared this earlier. This is just a quick look see at the site plan. So this is from our TIF application. See our two buildings down there on the southwest and southeast that we voted to remove from the TIF to facilitate some of the things that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes. Again, that does not come to fruition, if that's the right word, unless we actually get to a point where a plat is filed, which would require us to go several steps down the road. So just got three quick pictures here, just to get everybody excited, so we know what we're talking about. Looking southwest, picture of, from Shawnee Mission Parkway in Antioch. Looking southeast, this is kind of hovering above the doughnut shop. Looking northeast, kind of towards the intersection up there at the top would be the intersection of Shawnee Mission Parkway and Antioch. So as Mr. Dyer shared, the development summary, this is what they are proposing to deliver to the city. Is a 136-ish million dollar project, 85 full-time jobs, 80 part-time jobs. These are their projections. I have not vetted where those 85 people will be working, or those 80 part-time jobs, but with five restaurants and the, all the retail and the, with the grounds and the residential. It, it's within the, the realm of possibility. Jeff White, who works for Columbia Capital, is going to be crunching those numbers. Those numbers will come from him as a feasibility study that will go towards the, will go to the planning commission next week, and then it will come to us as part of one of the next items that we talk about.
Are we getting funding for this, additional funding for looking at this project, this iteration of the project? Or is that still part of like the previous?
Additional fund, did we get another $60,000?
Yeah.
No, we're just using the money he had.
We still had, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he, he hadn't spent it all.
Okay.
So again, quick summary, 10,000 square foot of restaurant and retail, 10,000 square foot of civic activity and restaurant, that's our center plaza. We call that the Ward Parkway kind of model there. 200,000 square foot of residential, it's going to be more than 300. I think in the plans right now, they're showing 320, 320 apartments. Parking structure below and above grade, potential transit stop on EBI. Mr. Dyer showed me the potential because we're working with Johnson County Transit. We're also working KC ATA to see if we need a transit stop there, because again, we sure don't want to put something in there that we're going to have to maintain if they're never going to put transit on that spot. Yes, sir?
Um, the 300-plus Class A units, what are, what are they projecting in terms of the, you know, the, the number of residents that will add to the community?
I don't have that. That's part of what they're putting together for Joe, or I'm sorry, for Jeff.
Okay, because I'd like to know that, because obviously, you know, a number of new residents is going to increase the cost for all the services we provide, so.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, potential transit stop, enhanced green space. I think again, for those that have seen the earlier version of this, not having all of the parking that was required with that particular plan, this allows us to have some green space. There's a potential city monument on the corner of Shawnee Mission Parkway in Antioch. I put that in there and say potential because it just depends on how the undergrounding works, how the utilities work. But we will, we are pushing for something. I will tell you that if we don't get that, it's quite possible we ask them to use the same line item, the budget that they have for that, to put some art on that site. We'll see if we, if that happens. Again, those, that's just another piece that we'll have to negotiate, but just to let you know that that's something that we're, would consider. Then again, a big one is providing city right-of-way along Shawnee Mission Parkway and Antioch for utility undergrounding. We will need to eat up some of their property for right-of-way to move those utilities back. So the fact that they're going to give us that property is huge, because that's expensive property. Yes, sir?
Apologize for keeping asking questions, but unfortunately, it's just my nature, but.
Who you are, yeah.
That's who I am, yeah. What, is there anything in this agreement?
We don't have an agreement.
Well, on the, on the napkins, about green building in this, where we, where do we stand on that?
There is nothing in there for, well, what exactly are you?
Well, I, I don't have a, I just, at this point, I'm just talking about at all.
I mean, we have talked about solar-ready and things like that, but I mean, there's nothing, we're, I don't think, we haven't said anything we're going to have a green roof or anything like that. We've talked about that having green components to it, have it be as green as they can make it and have it be solar-ready. We're thinking, we're components that we talked about that they seem to mean able to, but that's not spelled out in the term sheet. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, I'm just curious how far they're willing to go to make, you know, this new, these new residents, residences have a lower carbon footprint as, as low as possible.
How far would you like me to push them?
That's not up to me, but that's, I mean, that's just a question that I, you know, it's all going to depend on what does the city get back out of their investment? And where can we get the investment returns? And so that, those are later questions, some numbers that I don't know yet, so.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
A couple of times tonight, we've talked about parking being underneath the apartments. Is that underneath off of 64th Terrace and EBI? Or underneath off of the parking lot with the restaurant?
Some of it's both, some of it's both. So there, there's actually paths to get in from behind the restaurant, and there are paths to get in from the street back behind. And even though there are three independent parking structures, they're all connected with tunnels. At least that's where they're currently designed. I mean, that's.
So as you pull in off of Shawnee Mission Parkway, there'll be a level of parking at that grade?
Correct.
Underneath the apartments?
No, no, no. At, at grade will be the middle parking between the buildings.
Okay.
The other ones will be below.
Okay.
But I, my understanding is you can get to those from? Yeah.
I just want to make sure, if you're sitting at the restaurants between them, is the ground floor going to be apartments, or is it going to be parking of the apartment building?
I believe it's apartments, yes. Yeah, that, the parking under the buildings, you can, you get into from the street, or from the street.
From the south side, from?
South and then from the east.
You gotta remember, they'll be using part of the parking as essentially fill and as retaining.
To bring that side up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure when we talk about underneath the apartments, where underneath starts? Because there is a, a lot of grade change.
Yeah.
Everything we've seen and our understanding is that means underneath the ground, it is not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, from Shawnee Mission Parkway, the only parking you will be able to see is that middle structure.
Which will be sort of hit, sorry, which will be sort of hidden by this living wall. The concept is kind of their idea, right?
It's still there, but.
You've got a couple architects up here, sorry.
Any other questions about at least what's written in terms of what the deliverables are? Because we'll jump into the schedule, so we kind of understand the schedule. So beginning of demo, so we would anticipate currently, the schedule says that this gets approved 6/29 of June. That's what we're shooting for. Part of the reason we're shooting for 6/29 of June is that if the property taxes aren't paid on that by 6/30, then Mr. Block, who is the current owner, doesn't get the incentives across the street of Taco Bell. So that is why we are trying to meet their schedule for them on 6/29. It's a workable schedule, and if it doesn't hit, it doesn't hit, but that's what we're shooting for.
What you just said, that would be, does that, that's true if he doesn't pay the bill, the previous tax bill, right? On the, on the Kmart property.
If, if the taxes don't get paid, whether that's Drake purchasing it or Block out of his pocket.
Right, so, so the, so again, this is kind of an important issue, has been for, for a while, since there's a half million dollars or almost half million dollars outstanding property tax on that property that hasn't been paid by Block. There seems to be a linkage between that date and Drake being able to close something, sort of a deal, I guess, to fund Block to pay the tax, or, or Drake to pay the tax.
Well, they're only linked in that Block is pushing him to get it, I mean, if it was up to Block, we'd be approving it right now. Drake's just trying to get it done by 6/30. We understand why he's trying to get it done by 6/30, and we.
Because there might be a tax liability that goes.
Well, yeah, because then David's going to have to borrow $600,000 to pay the taxes to potentially.
Keep the property.
Well, no, well, to, to get the incentives across the street, he'll get the money back from Drake when he closes on the property whenever, but he's not going to close on the property until he has an RDA that's approved by the city.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the schedule, so that's.
Yeah, so the schedule is, is, well, the schedule of approval, which I, is last slide, but I can talk about it now if you want to go through schedule approval now.
No, that's fine.
So the, the redevelopment schedule is the begin, beginning of demo of the building and construction of site work would be by 12/31 and 22. So with the assumption that this gets approved last meeting in June, that's six months to mobilize and to, they're going to move as quickly as they can, but this is just in the agreement. They're going to start demo and site construction on 12/31 and 22. Project site will be pad-ready 12/31 of 23. We, one of the things you will recall from previous conversations was there was a lot of money that they were asking for that was at risk of the city before they actually had some sort of anything that was a deliverable. This one, so the, the first payment's not actually going to be, the first disbursement from the city would not occur until 7/1 of 24, which would be officially the third year, if we approve it in June of 22. So they would pay, we would pay the first payment based upon the site being pad-ready on 12/31 of 23. That we would complete construction of the infrastructure, and we are still kind of hashing out and defining what exactly the infrastructure is. But that's the next benchmark in the schedule. Complete construction, the out parcels, our out parcels are the restaurant slash retail that are along Shawnee Mission Parkway, so the three standalones. And then project completion will be 12/31 of 26. One of the things that we put in here was that we battled back and forth on a previous version of this, with the previous development proposal, was this whole idea of whether we perform or not, they, there has to be this revenue stream to pay for that development. We've pretty much said, we're not going to pay you unless you reach these accomplishments. So they have, it probably won't take till 12/31 and 26 to build this whole thing. But if we're, we've put strong language in there that says, if you don't perform, we don't pay. Not we defer payment, we don't pay. You will not get paid this disbursement if you don't do what you're supposed to do. So they've naturally tried to pad the schedule as much, because we don't, we're not giving them a whole lot of wiggle room. So this is kind of similar to our covenant to open. We all remember the concept of covenant, covenant to open. This is, just says, your money's at risk if you don't deliver on this particular schedule. So essentially, what you're looking at is, we're not going to pay them anything until this site's pad-ready. Very similar to past developments that we, past RDAs that we've done. When, when you have a pad-ready site, if everything falls apart, somebody will likely come in and can salvage that a heck of a lot easier if it's pad-ready. Meaning that all the retaining walls are in, the utilities are where they're supposed to be. You're going to have some parking structures that are below grade. Somebody can come in and salvage that. Again, we don't think that that's going to need to occur, but if that occurs and we haven't paid any money, that's just how life in the big city is for developer. So we, I like, we, we still have to hash out exactly some definitions of infrastructure, what's done without parcels and things like that. But the point of this is just simply to say, we're not going to give them any money unless they perform on some of these items.
So this is just for the TIF district, or does this include the spaces that will be part of IRB that are the, the towers?
This is, this is for the TIF payments, but the, the towers are part of the project construction. Yeah, so if, if those towers aren't done, they're not going to get their payment in 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, until those towers are done.
And then infrastructures that include, that's what you're hashing out? That includes the apartments, or if it's?
We're, we have, we've debated what we think that is, because we don't exactly know what it is. We're trying to figure out what is. We don't know if they're planning on doing the utility undergrounding, and that's the infrastructure. That would be great if that's what they're planning on, but maybe it's, we don't know. But, because we're still going back on this agreement, but I got to put this in front of council. It, we're going to, we will have a definition of what it is.
I get it, I just was curious what the current conversation.
No, I, I just don't want to, I, I, I'm not overly concerned, because we're going to have a definition for it. I just don't have one right now, because, but we know we need one.
That just seems like that would be pretty quick to have both of the apartments done. That's what my question is.
We, we don't anticipate, the apartments will be done last.
Okay.
And, and the central civic square will be part of that project completion, because what they don't want to do is they don't want to open up those restaurants in the middle of a construction site. They want to have the parking structures done. So they, they have this all phased, it's just not all spelled out in here. It's just, we're trying to put benchmarks in there to say, when this is done, that's a deliverable.
As they're designing it and figuring out the phasing, then we are trying to.
Exactly.
Got it.
So that's why we put, that's, well, they put the out parcels in there, because we, they can have those done out there all by themselves. Again, they don't want to have a restaurant, people are sitting outside when literally construction's going on both sides.
Similar, just to follow up to that, does the infrastructure, I mean, I know you don't know this yet, but do you envision it including the parking structure?
I don't know. It, it very well could be, because we actually, an earlier version of this had parking structure as a completion, but I don't remember what the date was.
The reason I ask that is because that's TIF, the TIF, you're, you're talking about TIF.
Well, they'll, they, there will be, there will be, there will be the proper amount. Another way that we've structured this is we've told them, and I don't call attention to this, but you'd probably like this, because I know it's just kind of the thing you'd like, is we will not, we will only pay for property acquisition last. So we will only, the money that we pay, if you have not performed the work, we're not going to pay you where you can include property acquisition. Because property acquisition, they could say, $12 million, I have that in TIF eligible, eligible expenses on day one. The day I buy it, I've got $12 million worth of TIF eligible.
Correct.
We've said, we will not pay you that until you have done all of your construction first. So that's another thing that's going to force them to do construction before they get.
Now, that's good. As you well know, I don't want to see back taxes rolled into property act, property costs that we then fund.
I will address that, because, yeah, we're not going to do that either. So, so.
Good.
Any, any questions about the schedule? And I'll jump into the actual, what the financials are of the deal and specifically address some of those things. So I'm, I'm going to order these just simply in the order that likely they will appear in terms of need. So the first component is going to be about $4.5 million in sales tax IRB. Yes, sir?
Quick questions before I write all this down furiously?
I will send this to you.
Can we get the slides?
To everybody, absolutely. $4.5 million in sales tax IRBs, those are industrial revenue bonds that exempt sales tax on construction materials. So the projected value of that is $4.5 million. It could be either way, but that's where we're at, is about $4.5 million. We will have a better number once the engineering is done, so, but that's what we're talking about. So that is mostly state money. So when construction materials are bought in Merriam, they would pay 9.475% in sales tax by issuing IRBs. It exempts all of that. 6.5% of that is state money. 1.45, 1.475 is county money, and only 1.5% of that only is ours. So to kind of put that in perspective, that's of that $4.5 million, assuming that's the right number, 3 million of that is state money. So about 712,000 of that would be city money, assuming that these numbers hold. And these numbers are still fluctuating a little bit as we, as we hammer them down. But they would be asking for sales tax IRBs. This is very similar to the, the previous proposal that we, we discussed. For approximately, well, actually, I think we have in there less than, no more than $400,000 in wave city development and city inspection fees. This is very similar to the last deal that we were talking about with them. The developer will still pay 100% third-party inspection fee. So this is really the fees that we charge for community development's time, staff time, things like that, that we're still going to do the work whether we get the fees or not. What we're not going to do is when we have large projects, we actually hire a third-party, Jeff Prochet comes in. And so when we work in IKEA, when we go and do the hospital, large projects, we actually bring in a third-party inspector. We are not going to eat the cost of the third card, party inspector. We will, we are offering and recommending to council that we waive the fees for our time, but we are not going to waive the fees for what the third-party inspector is. We will make them pay for that. Everybody agree that makes sense? Okay. Next one's going to be the TIF. $25.1 million in TIF reimbursement. There's about $40.6 million in TIF eligible expenses. We're not going to pay for interest, and we're not going to pay for back taxes. That is, that is outside of the $40.6 million. We've put a hard line, and it's in the redevelop, or it's in the term sheet, that we're not paying interest and we're not paying back taxes. Now, that doesn't mean that the way that the reimbursement and the shell game goes, that if it goes into this pocket, and they take out of this pocket and put it in this pocket, but we are not going to attribute back taxes or interest as an allowable expense. There's going to be no TIF payments till the 25th month, so that's July 2024. The payments are contingent on meeting the development schedule. Again, this is not a deferral of payment. This is not, if you don't hit this, this benchmark, when you do, we'll pay you. You will not get paid if you don't do these things, unless it's an issue of force majeure, which is going to be like a natural disaster. If you'll recall, we talked about, they wanted pandemic and all these other things in there, those things are gone. The only thing that's in there is a government-mandated workplace shutdown, which ain't going to happen. And so that's the only thing that, that, that was kind of where we negotiated that point with them. So the pandemic language has been pulled out of there. Actually, it's a government-mandated shutdown for pandemic, so it would have to be a pandemic, and not even martial law. It just have to be. So, so, I mean, we, we, we've pretty much put the screws down on them. We heard loud and clear that, hey, look, we're not going to pay, we're not going to put the money at risk, put the, 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 the TIF money at risk if we don't have some deliverables.
Hey, Chris, real quick, on the, the contingencies for me, the development schedule, I know it's still on the napkin. Is that going to be tied to building inspection reviews and certificates of occupancy?
We are working on that. We, that's one of the things that we're actually still working on. So we, we, the last one we sent over was where we, we defined pad-ready. Pad-ready is going to be a third-party person. We've talked about for the restaurants open and operating, we've talked about certificate occupancy for retail, or for the residential. We're still negotiating at points, but yeah, it's, we want clear definitions of what these things are, so that somebody can't say, hey, we're done. Well, you know, well, what's, and they don't, they want that defined too. They don't want us to come in and go, well, hey, you haven't painted this wall, you don't get your money. You know, they, they want a clear definition also. So we're still working on exactly what that means, but we will have those, what they mean.
All right.
That answer your question?
Yes.
No extension of TIF beyond 2032, that's another thing we heard loud and clear. We need to get these, this TIF expired, paid quickly as we can, and get this thing off the books. So this would all occur basically in years three to 10. Year one and two, there'd be no payments. It'd be, all the payments would be in three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So it'd be eight total years, TIF would expire in 2032. Any questions about the TIF? Last component would be the property tax IRBs, which would be a 10-year property tax abatement. There, that's valued right now, projected at $4.5 million. That is the projected 10-year property tax on that. We're not going to know exactly until it's built and it's appraised. We're working with the appraiser, we're working more with the appraiser on this project than I've ever worked with the appraiser on this, because of trying to make sure that we're legal in the ways we're doing all of these things, putting things in the TIF, taking things out of the TIF, issuing IRBs for sales tax, issuing IRBs for property tax. So $4.5 million in property tax IRBs. The developer will still pay a pilot, that's a payment in lieu of taxes. That's an agreement that they signed to pay all of the taxing entities, the city included, at the base level of the TIF. So that TIF, the base level, was 94. That's where it's at, that's what they're going to pay, the amount? It was until tonight.
Do, do you know what, the amount?
Oh, the amount? I could give you a ballpark of percentage, it's about 20% of what it is now.
So it's basically nothing compared to, I mean, right now, it's already a reduced value.
I wouldn't turn it away, but yeah.
But right now, it's a reduced value because it's a vacant building, so it has, it's only generating, what, about 200,000 a year in property tax total?
Yeah, I mean, it's also hard, because it's just the one parcel, they're adding other parcels in there.
I understand that, but, I mean, it's basically at, at already a depressed price, but then you go back, it's, it's a fifth of that, if you go back to the 94 base?
Ballpark, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the ballpark of what we've kind of figured out.
So basically, none of the other taxing jurisdictions will benefit from the new redevelopment. It's for 10 years, it's all going to go to essentially this project.
For, for 10 years.
For 10 years.
Well, they will, yeah, they will be kept whole at the base, at the base level. They will not, they will not reap the rewards of the development for 10 years.
Because the I-35 TIF district uses the 19, 94 values as the base.
That is correct, well enunciated. The, so all said, all said and done, in terms of what the city's obligation would be to this, would be, the total would be about $26.5 million. So that would, that'd equate to about 20% of project cost. So a $136 million project, 26.5, that's about right at 20%. Our kind of threshold for the gag reflex is 30%, so we felt like this comes in pretty low. One of the negotiating, early negotiating points was that we wanted to be able to use TIF dollars to, and this does not include undergrounding the utilities. So that is why we negotiated as far down as we could on this number with them, because we wanted to be able to include undergrounding the utilities and use TIF dollars for that. So, you know, the TIF, well, we potentially would come back at some point in time and say, hey, we want to underground the utilities, and we would pay for it as TIF. We're not really including it as part of this project, because it's, it expands beyond just this site. Some of it would occur on this site, but what we're looking at is actually underground the utilities from the back part of this site, the south end of this, to the top of the hill right here, to the other side of Antioch, down to the gas, uh, not gas station, the off-ramp. So we're looking at about a two and a, one and a half block, two and a half by two and a half block area, that we're, we would like to underground the utilities. We're doing some legwork on that with Olson Engineering right now. We've done a survey, and they are currently working with Evergy. None of the utilities will say what it costs or start to do any of the work until Evergy does, because Evergy owns the poles that most of them are hanging from. So we're leaning on Evergy to give us a cost estimate of what it would cost, because if it's reasonable, whatever that number is, then we would anticipate coming forward back to council. If it's $15 million, we'll come back to council, but we probably wouldn't recommend it.
The, that 25 million for the TIF, is that also, that's also the 10 years, right?
10 years.
So what is, what is your current projection for the TIF fund revenue over that 10-year period? How much money are we working with in the, in the restricted kitty of the TIF?
With this or without it?
Just without it, I mean, just the revenue that, both, actually, with it and without it.
Well, without it, we would project $40 million in 2032. Yeah, probably about $40 million.
Okay, yeah, 40 was what I was thinking.
Yeah, and so take 25.1 out of that.
So that leaves, you know, 15 for the undergrounding and whatever else, the other, the north side that comes up. And, okay, so 40 million approximately. Obviously, whatever you agree to here is going to then be subtracted from that, so.
Whatever you agree to here.
Well, I mean, that's true, but I mean, okay, that's, you know, 40 million or so. Thanks.
Yes, sir?
Do utility companies pay the franchise fee regardless of whether the utilities are above or below ground?
I believe they do, because it's the use of the right-of-way. Whether they use it the right-of-way above or below, it's, it's the use of the right-of-way. Yeah, I don't think it matters if they're, yeah, it's a good question, but I, I, I believe I'm correct. I will, I will double check, but yeah, because, because Evergy pays, and they're both in the ground and above ground.
Can that get any money for it?
That's true. Yeah, because there are some new neighborhoods that have it underground, and we get, we get franchise fees in, in those neighborhoods. So, yeah, because what? So yeah, because what, what they're paying for is the right to use the, the right-of-way. And the fact that they will disturb the right-of-way, whether that's because they trench something or they put poles, the, the concept behind the franchise fee is that there is disruption in the right-of-way and they're renting it from the taxpayers.
And one other question kind of tied to that is, we discussed, um, I don't remember the exact terminology, but I think like boosters for cell phones on utility poles.
Small cell?
Small cell. Does that mean we might have to erect poles to add those or?
What, what we would likely do and the things that, in the conversations we've had about if that day comes, is that they would be decorative. We would put decorative light poles and they would be on our decorative, we would, they, AT&T, who's the only one who's kind of leading the charge in that, they have actually several designed decorative light poles to do exactly that. Where they would look very similar to our poles, but there might be a big box that's like the size of this thing on the side of it that holds all the equipment. But generally, if you're just driving down the street, you, you wouldn't really know that it's different than the other poles. So we, yes, we would require that they do decorative light poles. Put a pole where we just undergrounded all the utilities.
Has this, has you, have you guys discussed this? Cause I think this would be an area where actually, um, the small cell density might, if we're building a bunch of apartments, a lot of.
They would want it.
They would probably want it, so it is a good question to ask.
Yeah. Well, if, if it's gonna go in the right-of-way, we're gonna control what it is. My guess would be if, if, I don't know, because we don't have this type of density, they could also want to just put it on one of those buildings.
Right.
Or they may wanna put it on this pole that's across the street wherever we are, the, the one that you can see from space.
Yeah. Yeah, but probably not. That's.
Yeah, it's just gonna depend on what the, what the rent, the rent is. But yeah, I, I will assure you, we're not going to underground the utilities and then allow anyone to come in and then just put another pole in there without a fight. Yeah, because we had those conversations even before this project came up. That's how we know about the decorative poles.
Thank you.
Good question.
I have a question about the undergrounding.
Yeah.
So with this, uh, study of how much it costs, et cetera, we would hope to do that in conjunction with the construction of the site. So we're not disrupting multiple times and things like that.
That would be the hope, um, if we can pull it off. Um, because you're, it's a lot of design that's outside of their site.
Totally understand.
So, so where, where we get, you know, when we're on the other side of Antioch, when we're on the other side of EBI, when we're on the other side of Shawnee Mission Parkway, I mean, if we underground utilities, it's, it's gonna be a mess.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a mess.
And we'd only wanna mobilize that once.
We would hope so, yes. We will do our darnedest to do that. I can't commit to.
Oh, I totally understand. I was just thinking.
Yes. I understand the council goal to minimize disruption by maximizing disruption.
Do it all at once, right?
Tear the hell out of it all.
Hopefully a short downtime, right? I mean, it's, yeah, it's one of the most traveled corridor, it is the most traveled corridor, so.
Absolutely.
You know, how, how can we minimize the disruption? Not just to our residents, but people traveling through too, because we want those people to keep coming back through there after this is built to come eat.
Got two more quick questions. What, um, what is, what is the current traffic count on Shawnee Mission Parkway? You know, roughly, I mean, yeah, no.
It's like forty-five at Antioch, isn't it like forty-five?
Forty-five thousand?
It's like forty-five thousand at Antioch.
A day?
It's like, it's like a hundred and seventy-five at the highway.
Hundred and seventy?
On the highway.
On, on the highway, yeah, no, I meant on, on Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Shawnee Mission Parkway at Antioch.
Because obviously I'm concerned about the exiting from, from I thirty-five and then trying to make a left turn on Antioch. And I know I talked to them about this. And, uh, is there anything in this redevelopment agreement that would give us or give, uh, KDOT, uh, right-of-way to expand if they needed to?
Well, with the right-of-way we have, it's possible we could maybe use it if we didn't underground.
Right.
Um, but the movement that you need or what, that you're looking for is likely, that's an off-ramp issue. It needs to be a protected off-ramp issue, so KDOT is not going to, because we've had this conversation. The, KDOT is not going to include that in how they look at the traffic study of what this development will do. Because they understand that this development's not their responsibility to fix the off-ramp. And KDOT doesn't have a lot of interest.
Yeah. Well, generally, I mean, the population increase in that area is gonna add traffic. And I appreciate the fact that they're not having as many entrance.
Yeah, they're gonna close some curb cuts.
Yeah, that, that's good, and we're gonna, at, at, at least the residents won't be coming in through the front door, so to speak, of the development. They'll be having to go around one of the, the sides, and that's good. I appreciate that part of it. I just wanted to kind of see if, if this development, we make sure this development doesn't preclude, uh, the higher powers for, that control that road from, uh, fixing it.
KDOT has, has been part of all of these conversations. KDOT is absolutely aware of the traffic study, their role in adding or detracting from the traffic on their road, cause it's their road. They're aware of all of those things. Um, yeah, they're aware of all of those things.
How does it impact though the undergrounding? I mean, how, what, what is the interplay between the, the undergrounding you're, you're proposing or thinking of?
We've gotta put underground vaults in. I don't think you can drive on underground, on the vaults. The vaults will have to be in the, in the right-of-way, in the grass.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm kind of wondering about that, cause that cost of then moving it later would just be huge.
Well, the, the issue is, is that you can't really widen just that little tiny block without going all the way to the other side and creating different turning maneuvers and then widening. I mean, it, it's, it's not as simple as just saying, hey, let's create a lane.
I know, I've thought about it a lot. Every time I try to make that four-lane shift in heavy traffic, especially at Christmas time.
Yeah, I would say it's safe to say KDOT has little to no interest in adding more pavement up there.
But they are aware of the problem.
They are aware.
They just have little to no interest in doing anything.
Right.
And it's their road, so we can't reconfigure.
Yeah, I understand.
And to KDOT's credit, they understand all of those things.
Yeah, 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 they, they're not, yeah, they're, they're not, uh, unaware of the concerns. It's just, there's easy, there's hard, there's too difficult, and they just, right now for them, it's too difficult. And it's not a property acquisition issue. It's just like, I don't even know geometrically how to solve this.
No, I, I don't know either, and we add a lot of cars, uh, you know, that's just a, it'll be a bunch, you know, a bunch of accidents might, you know, fatalities might get their attention. That's not the way we wanna get their attention, but.
Agreed. I also don't wanna get their attention with an undeveloped Kmart site either because.
That's true.
You can't get across three lanes of traffic.
That's true. I hear you.
But they, they are aware of it. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a start. Any other questions about our financials? Next steps, planning commission? Yes, sir.
Um, okay, now the other side of the coin, uh, what is the projected, uh, sales tax revenue that we might get coming out of the restaurants?
That'll all be what, what Jeff White is working on. It's, it's.
That's kind of important.
Spitballing projection.
Okay.
Well, it's not gonna be like a grocery store.
No.
It's not, it's not gonna be, so, so you are not gonna get the, if, if your return on investment at this site starts with a dollar symbol, then you're gonna vote no on it. Okay, it's gotta be the fact that you have residents that you don't have, it's gotta be that you've got a housing stock, you're adding the housing stock that you don't currently have. It has to be restaurants you don't have and gathering space. There will be a return, I mean.
Clearly, there's a, there's an, it's an investment and we need to, as a community, decide what we're, how much we're paying for what we're getting. And I'm just trying to get at some rough idea. So the first step is the tangible dollars back from that investment, which would be sales tax, but that may be.
Equivalent spitballing of, of adding a car dealership there. Spitballing.
Which is about?
About what a car dealership is.
Okay.
Make all of our car dealerships, add them up, average it.
A, 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 a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's probably a good place to start.
Yeah.
A couple hundred thousand a year, right?
Couple hundred thousand dollars in TIF tax.
Okay, so over the terms, over the course of this, uh, ten years, you're looking at two million, you know, you're looking at two million dollars of sales tax revenue coming back to the city. And we're putting out about, uh, twenty-six million, I mean, we're, in, in effect, some of it's state money. But, so there's a, a ten to one or one-tenth return in card cash. So the, there's other intangible things that we have to, you know, look for. And that part, part of the reason I'm asking about the green, um, commitment to green, uh, construction as much as possible. That's a tangible thing. We can say, okay, maybe that's worth some, obviously, all those other things you mentioned.
I mean, more population's a changeable thing. I mean, federal grants, county money, it's all per capita, it's based on population. You add five hundred residents in there, that's worth something.
We're, we're also paying for it in ten years, whereas a TIF project would be thirty years eligible.
It'd be twenty.
Twenty, sorry.
So, so ten-year abatement, we'll still be getting, we'll still be getting ninety-four base level. And in ten years, it's, you're gonna get the full force of the whole TIF.
Sure.
You know.
As, as long as we move it out of the TIF district, then we can use it.
The whole TIF district will expire.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying.
If you won't move it out, the whole district will expire.
That's, yeah, as long as we hold to that.
True, correct. And whatever future councils exist until then.
Right. Especially in the north side needs to be developed too, so.
Any other questions that I can answer for anyone? Next steps, planning commission will consider the TIF project plan on the fourth of next month. I think that's next, yeah, next Wednesday, it's the fourth of next month also. Drake's gonna submit their redevelopment, uh, development rezon and plat application. Uh, council, we would hope, will approve a resolution setting the project plan public hearing on their first meeting of May. We would set that for June twenty-ninth, cause that is our magic day. There's a joint city council planning commission work session on the tenth. What's that? What did I say? Oh, okay, June twenty-seventh, I'm sorry. Uh, joint city council, uh, planning commission work session on the tenth of May. The next night Drake will meet with the neighbors. That will be Wes Vernon neighbors and everybody within, yeah. Uh, planning commission will hold public hearing on Drake's development application on the first of June. And then on June twenty-seventh, uh, city council will have the four agreements, uh, and deal, uh, um, agreements, I'm sorry. The four agreements that we, generally, you got a planning one, you got an RDA, you got the, uh, the, the project plan adoption and then the zone rezoning. Cause we do have to rezone it to PUDG. So there's your, there's your next couple of months as it relates to this agreement. Any questions about the RDA? Anything that's missing from these terms of the RDA? I, I mean, I know there are things that are missing. Let me rephrase that. Are we hunting in a wrong direction with these terms? Is twenty-five million dollars too much? Is three hundred Class A apartments not what we want? Is five restaurants in the gathering place not enough, too much? Because that's, now is the time to let us know, because we're gonna, we're gonna continue to develop this redevelopment agreement so that we can bring it back to council. But this is gonna be kind of the backbone of it.
You know, I, I don't know how the other council feels. Twenty-five million is a lot, especially when you're only getting back, you know, maybe two million over that period in, in enhanced revenues. And I think, you know, um, more of a commitment to some sort of, um, green construction, it might be, uh, something that would be, uh, tangible, that the residents would, many of our residents would appreciate. And I don't know how amenable they are to that.
Ask for green construction?
I say, I think that's really broad, David. Like, I mean, I agree with you. I'm not, but I'm not saying that I know what the answer is either, but.
What, what do you?
Is there something in the climate action playbook we can look at?
Yeah, we discussed lead certification. Sorry, that's wildly close. Hey, guys, we discussed lead certification, but, um, I think we met some resistance with that, was saying we want it to be lead certified. And so that, for me, is still a goal.
Yeah, we asked for that. Yeah, they said no.
Right.
This is the time to, this is the time to decide whether.
But if they walk away from this deal because we demanded lead certification, then.
Right, can we ask, so lead certification requires a lot of extra money to get it actually certified.
Correct, the actual lead certification.
So can we talk about like building to a certain lead level, but not necessarily going to certification?
I think the climate action playbook is probably a great place to start.
That's what I'm talking about, because we're getting, you were at, we're looking at twenty, they're gonna get essentially a benefit of twenty, the, the investors, the private investors that own, that ultimately own this private property, are gonna get a public investment of twenty-five million dollars. And the, unlike some, some investments, there's not a lot of sales tax return, you know, additional revenue that's gonna be generated. So there is a, a net, uh, benefit that's going from the public side to the private side. Yes, having that eye, the eyesore removed, having that corner, that, that whole area vibrant, uh, everybody, that's worth something. Is it, is it worth a net twenty-three million dollars? Or is it worth, what, this is negotiation time. This is where you, you know, if we feel strongly about something, you need to, it's, tell, tell Chris right now.
Well, why not make them meet and exceed the IECC standards for new construction by ten percent, twenty percent, whatever number? Then it's at their discretion how they get to that. We don't make it lead, we don't quantify it as lead. You know, they can use extra insulation, they can, you know, put on some, put some onsite energy generation. There's a hundred different ways to exceed that building envelope performance threshold.
Thought on this or input? I mean, that's, it's great to me.
International Energy Conservation.
I mean, it, are we talking the, uh, when you say ten percent, ten percent of?
Well, I mean, if, if it's, you know, green is too broad, lead, lead gold or silver is too stringent. You know, new construction has to meet certain energy conservation code numbers for envelope performance, whether through building com check or energy modeling. We could put a threshold that they have to meet and exceed by ten percent. That's a pretty low-ball number that should be pretty easy to do.
Are you, so, um.
I run a city. I don't even know, I don't have any clue what you're talking about.
I, I know, cause it's, I do it every day, but.
We can, we should, we can definitely take a look and see if we, I think the question is, you know, just on the whole overall project, on a specific part, you know, you said, um, building envelope. Are we talking, um, you could also put in there the mechanicals and things like that, so, uh, let me, um.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to help like quantify it, but make it accessible and attainable. I'm trying to help thread the needle between, I mean, go ahead.
Could we put those stipulations like on the residential towers and like, not the commercial buildings or, you know, I'm, I'm trying to add more to it for you guys if that's like.
Especially for kitchens or restaurants, that's pretty tough.
Yeah, like all electric building.
Like the residential towers, for me, the energy usage of the towers themselves, I'm, I don't want us to just do some like, you know, like, no offense if anyone here is like building the ones on Neiman, but they have like five different types of siding and, you know, like.
Start and stop in the middle of a wall.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the playbook and it's all kind of general. And so I don't know how to quantify it either, but I know that I want that to be something we, we're more aggressive about. Because if I, if we can't get the affordable housing piece of it, right, which seems like a non-starter.
According to them, yeah.
Right, then, then this is the more aggressive side of it for me. Ted, that would justify, obviously, it costs what it costs. I'm not questioning the return on investment, but if we can ask, I mean, that's, that's aligned with what we're doing.
So what I was gonna recommend too is kind of, obviously, we have discussion with, um, building officials, with our third parties, and then also have a discussion if the council is wanting us to go that direction. Discussion with Drake of, okay, hey, you get something here.
Would you be willing to pay more for that? Because I assume that it's gonna cost more.
Well, well, let, let's find out, because that's a, that's a.
I'm assuming, I don't know.
That's a twenty-three million dollar public investment in this project. And we need something more than the, you know, we need, I think that our residents need something.
But we do or you do?
No, well, it's not me.
I wanna make sure that it's the council, cause the council knows on it.
I just, I, no, absolutely. I, but I just think that this is the time to, 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 to try to.
I don't disagree.
Develop enough value that we can go to the public and say, you know, this is a good deal, other than the fact that we just get rid of this.
Is I need to be able, in a negotiation, I have to be able to go and say, this or no deal. I need to understand where that line. I need to understand where that line is, or then I need to bring him in here and all eight of you can do this to him. So, I need a unified point to bring to him to say, this is what we want. I mean, I can't just hand him the climate action bin and go, here, make this happen.
Understood.
So, I need, I need, I need hard, whatever that stuff you were talking about, whatever. Sounded like something measurable.
Well, we just got, I, I mean, basically, we just got the numbers right tonight. So, I mean, you know, to, to tell you something tonight is obviously difficult.
But aren't some apartments individually, don't they go on the market as being high-efficiency buildings and high-efficiency apartments?
There's an entire, yeah.
Don't, don't get me wrong.
Why isn't there a definition of that?
If we make Drake do this, they will market it as.
They should and, and we should want that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know how to make that tangible. I just know that in looking, that's, that's a big selling point. This is a high efficiency.
I'm looking at the climate action playbook.
I am too.
There's a few, and I should have done some more homework, sorry. There's some.
Don't apologize.
Actions in here that we could put some of that language in there to say like, it's a little bit more attainable, I think, versus just saying, we want it to be green. And then, you know, that, I, I mean, I don't think it's a deal breaker for, I think we would rather have, in my opinion, I'm not going to speak for everyone, I would rather this project be developed and, and it, it's word for. I want it to be developed and I want it to be a great and bring residents to our city. It's not going to kill it for me if it's not green, but I think as a council, we all agree that we are trying to be more climate friendly and we should promote that with new residents. And I think the residential components are a huge part of making those more climate friendly.
I, I, I got cha, I got chastised last time for saying I would give more money for a project, so I'm going to abstain from that. To David's point, it would be, it would be nice to get a little bit back for the city. I know we're getting a new development, but it's all private development and private hands. It doesn't feel like for nearly thirty million dollars or twenty-six, however you cut the numbers, it doesn't feel like the city is getting amenities. Does that make sense? Like, I mean, I know that, I mean.
Gathering space, I mean.
And we are getting a whole bunch of restaurants we don't have.
Since I've been on council.
But is it worth twenty-three million?
Residents have said to me, which has been a long time, with, with, people have said to me, we want nice sit-down restaurants. And so, yeah, we are giving them that. We are giving them something that they specifically ask.
We have higher density housing.
That's what I was going to say, we're bringing in a housing stock that doesn't necessarily exist in this form completely in the city right now. And so, that's, I mean, not to argue with you, Jacob, because I agree with you, but I think we are bringing things and I think it is justifiable. And you just have to, we all have to learn how to put that in.
Dollars and cents.
Tangible terms that aren't dollars and cents because it's not all about money at the end of the day.
Well, but the thing is that property has forty-five thousand cars going by it and a hundred and sixty thousand on the highway. That property is worth something for the right project. And the, some of those projects, some other project could potentially generate a bunch more return.
Hasn't it happened yet and when is it going to happen?
Well, I, there's probably some reasons for that, but, but, uh, uh, I think that there are some developers who buy properties, sit on them till the residents get so frustrated with them being vacant that they soften us up. This is, you know, I'm just saying, I don't know how, I want to have something.
If it's a block, then yes, I would agree with you, David, but it's not block. And him and Drake are in the news not getting along right now currently. So, I think it's not, it's not a bait and switch project in my mind.
No, I'm not saying that.
And we have been publicly pretty rough on, on them as far as this goes, right? Like, we're not messing around, you know? So, is it, is it worth walking away from and not having an uncertain future?
I'm hoping they're not going to walk away.
Well, are you willing to walk away?
I don't know. I want to, I, you know, but at the same time.
Are there seven other votes that won't walk away?
I won't walk away.
I think you're on the right path. I'd like to see them give us a little something in terms of sustainability.
Heard loud and clear.
I mean, they got something.
Heard loud and clear.
Something we can hang our hat on.
Hey, Jacob, so I just found this international green construction code. Is that what you were saying? Did you say IGCC?
No, the IECC, the International Energy Conservation Code.
Okay.
All the buildings have to meet certain.
We could also look at the well-bidding building institute too. The well-building institute is far cheaper than lead, I believe.
Yeah, well, 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 building is really hard to get.
Yeah.
Well, reach for the stars, baby.
Lot harder than lead.
Yeah.
That's showbiz.
I mean, it's a really great standard. It does, it fixes a lot of things that lead falls short on, but it's really hard.
So, we will lean on them for some sort of IECC rating, some sort of green infrastructure, some.
Or at least some percentage of, you know, there's, there, there can be some sort of, um, some sort of metric that at least shows that this isn't concerning, we're trying to, yeah.
I mean, just saying do something green, I mean, I can't, I can't ask them for that.
I think, you know, what the number is and, and his suggestion is worth looking at, uh.
Agreed. So, so that's your next steps. So, this'll, this'll come over the course of the next two months. We are at the end of April, so May and June will be hot and heavy on these. We know we need to come up with some, uh, additional data points to share with the council on the RDA. But it sounds like we're at least in a place where we can continue to move forward and we will keep the council informed of those conversations. Happy to answer any questions that you might have from, from here on out.
Thank you for answering all my questions, at least as, as they go now. I appreciate it, that was hard, that was painful, but.
Thank you for keeping it moving.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.